Good evening. This is Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's May 11th of 2023. Welcome to the Planning Commission and to the members of the public that are here tonight. Let's start our meeting tonight with the Fledge of Allegiance. Before we get to the public comment on the short-term rentals, draft ordinance, just one item of business here and it's approval of the agenda for this evening. Any discussion? Okay. We're just voting on the agenda, approval of the agenda right now. All of them favor, say aye. Okay, so now we're at the public comment of the meeting. I want to make sure I've got everyone here. A couple other folks have joined us online since I last looked up. And I want to double check that their screen name is their real name there. So if you can hear me online, Nancy Morlino, you're in attendance?
Yes.
And would you like to speak Nancy tonight?
No.
Okay, I'm just keeping track so I can, you know, call on people. Miranda Clemson?
Yes.
Yes, that's the right name. Would you like to speak, Remen?
No, I'm scared to listen.
Okay, and Kristin Nugent?
Yes. And no, I do not need to speak.
Okay. And Mary Reed?
Yes, I'm here, but I'm just listening.
Okay, okay, thank you very much and thank you everyone for putting your names down. We've got a couple other Planning Commission members that are online on the Zoom call. Annie McCain and Howard Burgess are up there and the name tags here, Mary Beth Polley, Jerry Sterns, and Sherman Hunter are on the Planning Commission. I want to start by just explaining some of our rules of procedure here for the Planning Commission. We go through these and revise them if needed every year. I just want to read a few things about when we have the public at the meeting and wanting to comment. So we've got in our procedures, we have two minutes per person unless the commission wants to change that. We need to do that by motion. So speak up if you want to do that. Members of the public must be acknowledged by the chair before speaking. If I go down this list, that should be easy enough. Comments by the public or members of the body must be addressed to the chair or to the body as a whole and not to any individual member of the body or public. If a member of the public has already spoken on the topic, he or she may not be recognized again until others have first been given the opportunity. Order and decorum shall be observed by all persons present at the meeting and members of the body and members of the public shall obey the orders of the chair or other presiding member, and I guess that would be me tonight. So we, if you need a copy, if you'd like a copy of the proposed ordinance, there's one out there. And there's a list, the frequently asked questions that we've come up with. And we are, this is a meeting to hear from you. This, this is something that's in draft form. In fact, we just heard back from the town attorney earlier today about some suggestions he has in the draft. So we'll be putting, we'll be making those changes before our next meeting on June 1st. But we wanted to get an idea of what, what the town is thinking about this ordinance. And that may lead us to make some changes as well between now and the first. So if there are any questions about the procedure and how things will work, I'm just going to go down the list and and then we'll the people online will actually be last. So first on the list is Bridgette Remington, but Bridgette, you've decided not to speak? Oh, you do? Okay. So the
You want to have them up to the table so that we can hear them?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can come here and sit. So you're fine. So if you want, when you, when you want to speak, be fine to come up here. We have the microphones. The people at home will be hearing you much better when, when you're on the microphone here.
Hi, I'm Bridgette Remington. I live in Rutland Town and had an Airbnb rental in our primary home where we hosted people onsite while we were there. Now we don't do that. We actually do longer-term rentals, but it's not to say that in the future, we wouldn't want to use it as a short-term rental again. So I was interested first why the, I, I read through the frequently asked questions, but trying to understand the impetus for this ordinance now.
Well, we've heard that some other towns are looking at this across the state. It's, it's kind of a buzz going on, whether, you know, it's something that a town wants and people are going back and forth and what the language should be. And I think maybe the main impetus was us discovering that there were at least 30 short-term rentals in Rutland Town and we knew of very few of them. And the fact that they were, that they're in neighborhoods and not in business commercial sections or like that.
Okay, ours might be a little different because the, the use of the space before our use, although we are in a residential neighborhood, it was a commercial use. So it may be, we converted from a commercial use to a short-term rental, long-term rental use. It was actually a mother-in-law apartment for my mother-in-law for some time. But I, I would caution that if you didn't know that the majority of the rentals were there, there probably isn't a reason to have such an extensive ordinance yet. And I would ask that the commission consider just conducting a study, which many of the towns who considered ordinances actually kind of pulled back and decided to study the issue first rather than pass an ordinance with a heavy burden on the residents and then find out if there was a problem or what the concerns were, because I would say that currently, if, if you had somebody who was doing 15 days of rentals, I'm a numbers girl, so if you had somebody who decided to rent for 15 days and all of a sudden they fell into this category, they'd probably be seven individual rentals of two days apiece, maybe one that's three days. And that, the permit amounts right now with a cleaning fee at $75 a night, which would be kind of typical for a one-bedroom. For a one-bedroom, the person, if they rented $75 a night, 15 days, it'd be $1,125 would be their gross, but their net would be $112. So it really creates a, I, I would consider that undue burden on the person who has the unit. So that's one thing to look at. And then I know I'm on a short time, but I would also ask that you would consider having a waiver for people who live onsite where the renter is renting, because that in itself should be enough as a, as a control for any like noise or traffic or safety concerns. And so those are the, the main points I'd ask you to look at and really reconsider whether now's the time to pass an ordinance that's this extensive in a town that doesn't have zoning or make people comply with codes right now. So thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Bridgette?
No, thanks.
Next on my list, Brad, you were going to sit this out?
Uh, no, I'd like to speak.
Okay. Come on up.
Fred Nicholson, resident of the town. When I used to work for Livin', I started out with the State of Vermont and Permits Compliance Protection Division. And I'd show up at a meeting where someone was looking for a permit. First thing I'd do is look at the purpose and need statement. So when I started researching this, first thing I did was look at the purpose and need statement. And according to the document, it's to reduce or eliminate negative secondary impacts, i.e. parking, garbage, noise, outdoor nighttime activities. And so I contacted our local police force requesting the number of complaints. And the answer was zero.
I just would add to that, he asked me if we had, I have to know the addresses of all the Airbnbs. Like we could systematically go through and see if there's any, we have any noise complaints or any issues with those.
I was going to add that, Ed. I wasn't going to throw you under the bus, really. But it, it struck me as that this is a solution looking for a problem. To back up the young lady that spoke first, nobody knew there was 30 AB and Bs in the town. That in and of itself would say there isn't an issue. There's talk about whether or not they're paying their rooms and meals tax. My understanding, the way Airbnb works, the monies are paid to them. They distribute the money where it belongs, including meals or rooms tax to the state. State skims their portion off it and the town will receive any monies coming due to them. A question was raised about whether or not they're paying their income tax. None of our business. I have said before, I'll say again, as I leave here, most of the people in this room that know me know my attitude on government. Less government, still too much government. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Any questions? I did want to read something. One of the, in the frequently asked questions, under the question of why does Rutland Town need this ordinance? What we've come up with so far is from our experience and our work here, the town wants to ensure all short-term rentals are safe for the occupants and like other lodging businesses are inspected, pay applicable fee taxes and do not overburden our community's water and septic systems and don't alter the character of our neighborhoods. So I just would like to add that as part of the purpose and the needs of this ordinance as, as we have looked at this so far. Sorry, Chris.
I was waiting to be called. Hi, I'm Chris Howland. I live on Pinecrest Road in the town of Rutland. I've been here 30-plus years. I'm not the director of butter of a B and B, but there's one, one lot over and we have a small nine-house community. Tenants or the, the renters of the Airbnb by me are excellent renters, no problems. The neighbors that have chose to rent their houses have more issues than than, than, than the short-term renters. As far as garbage, the person who has the Airbnb next to us has a garbage pickup that must enter the house. There's no receptacles that are left out for the Monday morning casella pickup or whatever day casella comes through. We do have this big black thing visited the other day and the black bear gets into any garbage that's
I know that bear.
Left out. Yeah, well, he came down from Alaska, by the way. And so I think that this ordinance that's proposed puts an undue burden on the prospective homeowner. I, like Fred, used to work. We aren't planning on leaving, but I think that this would put a burden if I chose to, I mean, leaving, meaning I, I don't plan on having my home become a short-term rental. But if I did, I think this would be a undue burden on me as it is other owners or owners and that I, I just think that it, there's not much profit when you go through all the costs of, of being a part-time landowner. And frankly, I think that the monthly rental that a residence, like a single-family home would require is probably outside the affordability and added, my particular neighbor uses his facility occasionally, not like a quarter share at Killington. But if he was, I used to commute from Rutland to, or Boston to Rutland. And if I, in the summertime, you make it less than the lawn doesn't get mowed. And in the winter, if he doesn't come by, the driveway doesn't get shoveled. And so the occasional user who uses facilities around the state, be it the lakes or Killington to ski, is going to be burdened with other family attitudes. And over time, when he used to be up every other week, tops, and the lawn doesn't get mowed, the driveway doesn't get shoveled, and those are just shadows for that criminal come in, copper hunting or whatever. And I think that put an undue burden with the administrator, another, another thing for a town administrator to, to take another salary that goes with it. And if you got 30 of these, that three bedrooms is only 12,000 a year. There's a proposal from listening to the select board meetings. As this has been mentioned there, that there was a cost, you're, you're going to employ somebody to administer this plan. And so the, some of the parts may exceed its income and this ordinance will become a financial burden on the town.
Right. Any questions for Chris? Thank you. And Daniel?
It's Brett, B-R-E-T-T.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dan Brett. Like others in this room, I also have a property that I use as an Airbnb for a good part of the year. I'm here to ask the council to reconsider the ordinance that's being considered. Looking at the rules, I think it's not nearly as effective as having property owners police themselves. And some of the rules in and of themselves are just not appropriate for short-term rentals. Looking at the rules that are outlined, it seems like the primary motivation is about maintaining the integrity of the neighborhoods of Rutland. But I think that motivation is already shared by property owners who are operating a short-term rental. We don't want large, loud, rowdy groups, and it sounds like there haven't really been any complaints about those anyways. Those same groups, one, you know, we want to respect our neighbors, but two, it's those same groups that tend to damage properties and materially take money out of our pockets. Secondly, I think some of the rules are inappropriate. There's one specific about the occupancy limits for properties. Currently, it's directly tied to the number of zone bedrooms for a property, but I think the council should consider square footage, unique layouts of properties and things like that before determining occupancy. And I think people, the property owners themselves are the best suited to determine what is an appropriate maximum occupancy for those properties as well. I guess the last thing that I would say is, I was looking on the town Facebook group and there was a pretty intensive thread about this meeting today. And there was one comment, and I think it actually was not from an Airbnb owner or operator who said, "I hope that the council has faith in the residents of Rutland to police themselves and to be respectful, respectful and responsible neighbors." And I think everyone in this room has been doing that so far, so I don't see the need for an ordinance that's this extensive at this time.
I have a question and maybe there's others. If there is a bad actor in, in the short-term rental world here in Rutland Town, how would, how would you police that?
I think that's kind of catering to the exception rather than the rule. So I mean, could be warnings if there's multiple repeated noise complaints, things like that, then you can take action around there. But I don't think this one-size-fits-all approach to everyone is creating a burden for 30 people when let's say there's only one bad actor. Otherwise, so I think we should tailor it more towards, you know, the vast majority of folks rather than the single exception. There's likely always going to be bad actors. It's going to be almost impossible to mitigate at some point, but I think we can tailor for the majority rather than the minority.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, one of our intentions was to limit the number of, of bad actors.
And it sounds like currently there's not really any going on right now.
I can speak to the bad actor part.
Okay. This is Chief Humus.
After 28 days, you have to get an addition. Actually, nothing to help with a short-term rental, like a property or a motel, they ask me, they gotta go, they gotta go now, we can go there. Hey, you're, you're, you're welcome. You have to leave now. Sorry. And they can work out a deal with them. I think the motel's getting the money back or whatever, but you get rid of them that way. Short-term rentals are not a problem for us to get rid of it.
And actually, to expand on that point.
Just saying to drive the chicken farm. That's, we have to deal with that. That's a rental place.
To expand on that point, we actually, for our specific Airbnb, we will not rent longer than 28 days for that specific reason.
Yes, yes.
And the thing with
You're not, you're on the list? We'll get to you. Okay, thank you, thank you. Any questions for Dan?
I think, I, I just had a comment. I think that the occupancy is driven by more state bedrooms. That's not us. That's, that's more of a, that's, that's more of a state issue with the septic system. But if you have a certain amount of bedrooms, a certain amount of occupants, I think, I'm not, I'm just making
I did see that. It's, it's similar to other ordinances that have been adopted specifically. I thought it was interesting. In the FAQ, it says, "We're not Killington, so why do we need this?" But the occupancy language is identical to the ordinance that Killington has as well.
But that, those two don't necessarily
I know, but I, I just think that, and I understand that's a big issue, but you know, I think homeowners are better equipped to say, you know, we, we can understand what the maximum occupancy should be rather than, you know, if there's instances where you basically have a room that essentially is a bedroom, but it doesn't have a closet, but it has an egress window. You know, can we not utilize that space anymore? And are we going to limit the maximum occupancy and therefore limit how we can market our listings?
With, with your places, what, what is your maximum occupancy?
Uh, I think it's 10 right now.
Okay. And how, how many bedrooms?
Technically zoned-wise, it's three. So under the proposed limits, that would drop us down to eight.
We don't have zoning, so
For the, for the, I guess, like, so technically, if you're like on the actual, like, deed, lister card, whatever it is, it says three bedrooms. So under the proposed ordinance, we would only be allowed to host up to eight people. When we do have an extra room that has a proper egress window, doesn't have a closet, so isn't technically considered a bedroom.
Is there someone on, on the property at all times?
Uh, not like owner occupied? No.
And if there was, a, a fire broke out?
There is an egress window and there's an extra exit on the bottom of the basement for folks to get out. So there's two mechanisms to escape.
Right. And one of the reasons we were looking at this is if there was a fire somewhere, fortunately. Do firefighters, do they have all the information they need when they get to that, that home, that dwelling? And do they know how many people are in there that need to come out? When they do their counts?
I'd like to make a comment as a firefighter.
Just a minute.
When you show up to a house fire, we are
You said no.
Yeah. A second. Were, were you answering me?
No, I was waiting for the, for the end of the question. What, just about number of, of people getting out? I mean, I, I don't necessarily know if that's a problem if the town has access to, most of these bookings are done well in advance. So if there's 10 people versus eight people and the town has access to that data in advance, I, I don't necessarily understand. Like they still have that information available.
We should know at, at any given time, how many people are in?
I'm not super familiar with how the local fire department operates, if they need that information ahead of time or whatnot.
We can get that information through
You can, yeah, from, from, if it's through Airbnb or Verbo or whatnot, the number, the guest has to mark the number of people that will be on the property. So if it's eight people, if it's 10 people, if it's whatever it is, we have a count. And that's important to us too as property owners, because again, we don't want to exceed the maximum occupancy that we'll have there.
And, and you police that?
Vigorously, yeah. Because again, we don't want to have, I don't want to rent my property to someone and they say they're having eight people and then 50 people show up. So we have, in our specific instance, we have door cams that monitor people coming in and out. They're sent to motion detectors and things like that. So we know exactly how many people are in the house at any given time.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
Not that I want to speak on this, but I'd like to know those three firefighters in this room. I don't know about the other two. I think one did want to make the comment. I'd like to make the comment that when my pager goes off and says, "We have a fire call at such and such an address," we don't have a clue how many people are in the house. If we got called to your address, I would have no idea how many people are in that house. So it's no different from that aspect.
Whether we have an ordinance like this or not?
Yes, yes.
We're going to search a house the same way, whether there's two people in it or there's 30 people. Because you could go to a house on a Saturday night where they're having a slumber party and there's 12 kids in it. So we search the house the same way and to try to keep a list in fire trucks to try to keep track of whether the building's an Airbnb at three in the morning or not.
Thank you. Any other firefighters that would like to? First responders? Thank you. I've got the Cooligs. Is it Jack that wants to speak?
He does want to speak too.
Okay.
I'm Teresa Koolig and I'm just, I've got concerns about fire districts. The town does not provide us all with water, so we have community wells. So we are by the state, we have to pay the state for water usage. So we're just wondering what this might do for impacting water usage. You've got 30 rentals now, 30 Airbnbs now. Who's to say this is going to, it might explode and there might be more. There might be up to 100 or whatever. So if you don't limit that number and how many in a neighborhood and how many fire districts, how much water can one support? If you've got a five-bedroom house, you've got a lot of laundry that you're going to be doing and a lot of bedding and towels. And if you've got a pool, you've probably got pool, pool towels as well. So you're doing a lot of laundry. So there's a lot of water usage there. So we just want to know what the impact would be and we would like you to consider it. And if there's any way that we could be helped in any way, shape and form, because we ourselves have to pay for our water. It comes out of the ground and it's our water, but we still have to pay to the state. Five cents a gallon for all the gallons that we use. They base it on last year's figures. So we're just, I'm just concerned. I'm just, we're just one fire district and there's how many other fire districts in the town? I think there's a few more. Billy, how many fire districts do you know?
We have six.
Six total.
Yeah.
So there's five other neighborhoods that are, and you know, we're in a pretty good position, but other, other fire districts might not be in such a good position to be able to come across with the extra water. So it's just, that's just my concern there for that. So if you were to have a, a ordinance to include something, because I know overburden water, you can overburden if we end up having, we've got one in the, on the street now, who's to You can overburden if we end up having, we've got one in the, on the street now, who's to say we won't have more? We don't know. We don't know where this is going. So I'd like to have a little, it's comforting to know there's a little bit of backup. They've got our back a little bit, so that if something happens, we've got some, we can call somebody to help us with something. Or extra fees charged to, uh, consider having, uh, these Airbnb bees. Have, uh, pay an extra fee for impact on water and resources.
Thank you. Jack, did you? Can you, can you move up to that microphone right there?
Only question that I had was to follow up with Fred, that all these are businesses, Airbnb are businesses in the state of Vermont and Rotten Town. Are they going to be registered with the state of Vermont Secretary of State? Do they, I understand that somebody said that they don't pay taxes to state of Vermont, that they go to the Airbnb and they relinquish the the rest of the money to the state. So I'm just curious as if that they're going to be a registered business per se in the state. And that and that type of thing, that if they have to pay the meal meals and rooms tax, it will go, doesn't go to the Airbnb, but it would go to the state like everybody else would have to be paying for it.
That's what it does.
So it goes, you have to make out a form every month to the state?
Yeah.
Okay, that's that's curiosity, yeah.
Yes, it is. Can I say something to her? About her water?
Okay.
Ninety percent of the people that have Airbnb have somebody come in and clean it after the Airbnb. They take that laundry to some other place to wash it. The girl we have takes it to a, let's say she takes it to a laundromat. She don't affect us whatsoever.
And your name again?
Charles Hemmely. I'm loud and voice.
But not knowing, but not knowing exactly how many people would take care of their own laundry or have it outsourced to another. Another, not knowing. And with, yeah, you've got thirty in the town now, but who's to say that it's not going to blossom to, you know, fifty, seventy-five?
Okay, yeah, okay.
Can I respond to that?
Um, you you're on the list to speak. Do you want to just, you're on the list. Do you want to come up?
Okay, fine. I might take more than two minutes because there's a lot of things. I've got to say, okay, she's saying, okay. We, we, uh.
You're directing your comments.
This one right here, I'm directing to her. Okay, I had three kids.
Mr. Hemmely?
We, yes.
No. No, that that's not, that's not how we do business here.
Okay, whatever.
Direct your comments to us and to the group as a whole.
Okay, we had three kids. Now our kids are gone. We've got this space. We rent it to Airbnb, three people, okay? What is the difference far as the water uses? We did their laundry. Now Airbnb, our laundry goes out. Okay? That's one point that I got to say. The other point is. I think that. This is, I'm probably going to be chastised for this, but this is one step closer. To be in zoning. And I am not for zoning. We've did, we voted it down. At least once or twice. And I personally am not, and this to me is one, just one step closer to zoning. And that's to me, the whole thing of this, and I don't necessarily go along. With the, like, I have my own well, I have my own sewer. Okay, when I had three kids there, we had laundry. The three kids were there all the time. They taxed my septic system twenty-four hours a day, fifty-two weeks a year. Airbnb is there for two or three days. Now, I was in the excavation business. I put in a lot of septic system. And if you can give a septic system a little time to rest, it works much better. Airbnb comes in on a Friday night at eight thirty, nine o'clock at night. Sit at six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, they get up, they go off and go skiing or go to a wedding or whatever you want to say to. They came back at at five thirty at night. And most of the time they go out to supper, which is local. Then they come back at eight thirty, nine o'clock at night on a Saturday night. And then they get up the first thing Sunday morning and they leave. So how much is that really tax, tax, taxing my septic system compared to three kids? Twenty-four hours a day?
I'm trying to keep a, you know, even amount of time for everyone. Any other comments?
Nope, I'm done.
Any questions? Thank you. Esther?
Oh. How did my name come up so quickly?
Sorry.
I don't have an Airbnb. I have, um, a son and his wife who do. And I know that it's very well managed and, um, they have lovely people there. And I'm very happy for them that they do have that. I, um, am curious about how you would fund an employee. Based on the fees that you have for, um, short term rentals. If you have thirty in the town, how would you hire someone to take care of? The inspections and whatever else they would need to do?
There are services out there and and just, I I think based even on thirty short term rentals. Uh, the the fees would pay for that service.
So that would be not be an additional tax burden on to, um, folks who don't have an Airbnb?
We're anticipating it will be, it will pay for itself.
I just, really?
It'll come out of the revenue of the Airbnbs from the owners.
Right, because.
It'll be part of the the fees that they pay per bed, per bedroom, um, that this. Similar to other lodging, you know, establishments and businesses.
And I, you know, I'm concerned because I think Airbnb folks already pay, I don't know what the percentage is even. But I know that they're registered with the state, they get their business to the state and they pay in to the state. So I, you know, I'm just concerned about why we at Rotten Town have to, um. Be asking for more money from them, I think. You know, if it, if it's helping people in our town and they're, you know. Providing a place for people to stay short term, those folks are spending money in our town. And generally, they're people who can afford to spend money. And, you know, they're skiing, they're eating out and I just, um, I just think that this is going a little bit too far. So that would be my, my comment.
Thank you. Um, did Dan Sweat want to speak? Dan Sweat? No, okay. Okay. Lisa Sinnett? But I don't know if I pronounced my last name.
Sweat or Sinnett?
Could be Sweat. Is there a Lisa that wants to?
I'm Lisa, I'm Lisa Sweat. I'm just asking.
Okay, and I I think we discussed, you may or you may not want to speak, so here's your chance.
So I'm Lisa Sweat, Rotten Town resident. We also, we have a primary here and we do host an Airbnb there. Um, we live there full time. Um. I find it very interesting that I feel like half of the people that are here. Have an Airbnb and the other half do not. And so far, it seems like the majority is ruling that. Nobody has had a problem with residences owning or running an Airbnb. I find it kind of conflicting and.
Um, but I don't know if we've taken account, but.
Well, I don't know.
Certainly, that certainly the testimony so far.
I know many faces here. Um, I've been a resident in Rotten, in the Rotten community for quite a long time. Um, and some of the ordinances as well. I don't, I I get that you're pulling them from the other communities, but I don't see where it's conflicting to to Rotten by any means.
Conflicting.
In the sense of the the occupancy or the the water usage or, and I I understand your concern with water usage, I do. Um, but most of us are on wells. I'm on our own well. We have our own septic. Um, and we do take care of our property. Um, but I also find it interesting. I don't believe that there's been any complaints and like many people have already said. Our guests most certainly have been wonderful. We have had great people, very respectful to our community and our private home. Um, and they do, they bring in an income to our community. And pretty sure most people in the room know there's no place to stay in in our community. Where are you going to host anyone? We have maybe one hotel that people can go stay short term. Look what we have. And I, and I have to, while I have the seat for a moment, we have had three incidences at our, at our private home. With people from the other side of the community that are staying in those hotels that have landed on our lawn and sleeping on our lawn. And that doesn't okay with me because I have two small children that come outside to play. And when you have some of these people sleeping underneath of a light post. That your husband wakes up to or people around, you know, are, it's just, it's super frustrating. And now all of a sudden we have this ordinance, it's why don't we look elsewhere in our community where we can help or? I don't know. I'm 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 probably not saying it very politically, but it's just, it's frustrating where we're at right now. And I'm sure you guys have concerns too, but I I think picking on the small Airbnb and the short term rental where we are bringing good people, like Esther just said. That have the financial means to rent from us, that are going to spend money at at our restaurants and shop around our community and go skiing, go skiing at Killington. The other people on the other side are not. And I just, I find it disheartening and I don't know, for, you know, you try to get ahead and.
Can you tell me why you think we're we're picking on?
I don't, it's not necessarily picking, but it's just, and that was one of my concerns too, where are you going to get the funds to pay for this employee? To navigate this and who who is going to? Twelve thousand dollars from the thirty Airbnbs, roughly speaking, is not going to pay someone's salary to police this.
It would be a service and so they would have a number of, they would, they would have other clients, I don't know how many.
So you're going to pay a service to do this?
Like a property manager.
No, I. I live on our.
And like, you know, that kind of system is what I mean.
But some of these properties do have a property manager.
I think I think we may be talking about different topics. When you say hire an employee, what 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 are you referring to?
Who's going to govern her? Who's going to? Keep an eye on or inspect or manage the Airbnb community of Rellen?
So Bill.
So partly my responsibility to be, be, when, when the reference was made to hiring someone to help with this. We are looking at a vendor who would look at the roughly thirty short term rental like sites out there. And give us a report on the properties in town, like how many are, how many in town are there? And it's about three thousand dollars a year.
So you're looking at a proper, or you're looking at a person or a company?
Yes.
Service?
Yeah.
To just say how many Airbnbs are out there?
They would, they would give us reports saying, just to help us gauge how many, how many houses in town are being used as that?
I can give you that information for free as an Airbnb.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, ma'am.
I understand. I I've actually had conferences with with Airbnb themselves. They are reluctant to release information unless you book a rental to tell you where it actually is.
Or if you're a host.
I understand, yeah, completely. But this is, Airbnb has been talked about a lot. But there's a lot, there's a lot more, so it's not just limited to Airbnb. It's it's across all of the different sites out there like VRBO and and all the other ones. We, I know we're using Airbnb as an example. Um, that the, the, the topic of the the tax came up. Some of the rental companies don't collect tax on behalf of the property owners, some do. So that would ensure that everybody's understanding about, about, well, the level of leveling the playing field to make sure everybody's playing, playing by the same rule. So that's part of that too, but we wouldn't be hiding, we wouldn't be adding staff at the office. You're absolutely right. The fees would would not even, wouldn't, wouldn't come close to covering somebody's salary. And that's, that's not, that's absolutely not what it's for. So it would be, we we would want to make sure that anything we would need to do to to help with the program was covered. So there would be no cost. And that that was, that was part of the goal was to make sure there was no extra cost to taxpayers as part of that.
Okay, well, I do also feel if I can add to that. Inflation is everywhere. Every year, everything goes up. So this year, I'd be paying three hundred dollars, a hundred dollar registration, a hundred dollars for each bedroom, a hundred bucks. What is it next year? What is it the following year? What is the following year if I continue to do it? Because you know it's going to go up. It's not going to be.
We have several ordinances we have have fees and those have not changed in in a long time. The the, we've, we've talked about that for other things and. The fees are are not there for the town to increase revenue. That's, that's, the town's not.
And I don't see any, I don't see any reason for it. There's been no, there's been no complaints. There's been no policing needed. There's been no fires as we know of, you know, and and it's, who's to say when? If I want to go away, I'm not talking about short term rental or you want to go away.
Mm-hmm.
And you leave to go to Florida for the week. And you tell your children, the house is empty. If you want to have your friends come up and the kids come on up. All of a sudden you have fifteen people there and you and your husband were there, you know, and you now are in Florida. That has nothing like Kurt and the other gentleman said, they don't have any idea who's in your home as far as the fire part goes. Nobody knows. So now all of a sudden you went from two people, whether it's the septic or the water or the fire department. And all of a sudden you've invited your children with their friends and their children and that, and you have twelve people. It doesn't, it's just, there's no leveling. I don't know, I just. Like I said, that's about all I have to say, but I do appreciate it and I would appreciate if you would reconsider the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Yes, Esther.
Um, I have a comment. Um, don't we have two hundred and what, sixty-one, is it two sixty-one towns or cities in the state? Right?
Depends how you count.
Two fifty-four. Well, we have seventeen places with short term rentals. So we're going to be able to add on to this. So there are not very many people with ordinances at this point by the sound. Secondly, if you have an Airbnb or a short term rental. As you call it, does that mean that your assessment will go up on your property? So that you will have an increased property tax? Does that, does that, um, considered more valuable? If you are. My beer in your head.
God forbid that. I'd like, I'd like to, um, bring Howard Burgess into that.
He he may not be able to hear what they're saying also, so when you get people up to the microphone.
He's not a lister anymore, but he was for a good long time.
You can hear, right?
Howard, did you, did you hear the comment?
I didn't yet. No, I didn't yet. No, I had to, did you repeat it? But it was just basically, what was it?
Hi, Howard, this is Esther Sweat speaking. I think you have to go to the mic.
Yes, they, they know. Or that one, either one.
True, yeah. Is this the mic? That's, are they both?
Yeah, they'll pick you up.
Howard?
Yes.
Hello?
Hi, Esther. Hi.
Uh, what I'm asking is if you have an Airbnb or short term rental on your property. Does that mean your property becomes more valuable and your assessment will be increased so that you will be assessed? A higher tax in the town? Is that a possibility?
That that is a possibility. I think, I think that the, the assessors, uh, realtors that are in the field today are finding. In some instances where homes are, due to the income. Due to the income that they're bringing in. That they're actually appraising them on the income and expense method. Which really puts it into a, a commercial. Uh, type of property and, and changes a lot of things and can raise the. Definitely raise the value if it's going to be considered a commercial property. But, but if, if it gets to the point where they're bringing in a lot of income. Compared to their expense and that's, yes, it, it, it could do that. It could raise.
So you're saying, so you're saying that Rutland Town. Um, might begin to collect the actual income earned from these folks who have. Um, Airbnbs and so that would, uh, affect the property. Uh, assessment.
I'm not sure he's saying that. I'm not sure he's saying that Esther. I think he's talking about how listers normal, uh, would do their job. In any way.
Yeah, well, I, I would just say that I, I had heard a comment from an, an appraiser. Uh, just a few months ago and, and, and what he was dealing with was some of the Airbnbs, he said that, uh. Was really affecting the assessment of the property because of the, uh, large amount of income. That, that they're bringing in. And I, that was a statement that came from him. I personally haven't been involved in any of it, but it, obviously it's a potential. If you're going to bring, if it's. It comes like an income to expense property, they could. Uh, evaluate it that way, assess it that way, and then it could change, uh, change a whole lot. I don't know that it's happened yet. In town, but, but I think. It, it could be becoming an issue.
Has Rutland Town come, contemplated that?
I, he's not saying Rutland Town's doing.
No, he didn't say that.
That could happen with, with or without. It's independent of this ordinance. That happening.
Okay.
Saying, yes, that would, that could happen.
Yeah.
Without this ordinance when an appraisal is done.
Yeah.
For property.
Okay.
Okay, um, yeah, got a question back there.
Oh, I just wanted to make a comment. Chris Holland, a member of Board of Assessment for BCA. It goes the other way too. If there are places. Assess based on income, remember the case Howard where Joe Gincola. Didn't had his assessment adjusted due to his rental income. And it lowered it and he took it to the state. Passed off to here in the town, took it to the state and got his assessment lowered due to the income of the property generated.
Okay, thank you.
It goes both ways.
Okay.
Simply, if someone can answer this, maybe I'll understand it better. By having an Airbnb. Major property rate from a residential property rate to a commercial property rate.
So allow.
Okay.
It does if the Airbnb reaches a certain square footage and occupancy. Versus a one-bedroom apartment versus a six-bedroom cupboard converted home. Airbnbs, and I can't speak for VRBO or some of the other rentals, but Airbnb, I'm very well educated in. I've managed over a hundred and fifty properties in total through Airbnb. It is specifically kept residential based on the square footage and the occupancy.
And that's, that's the Airbnb or, or, or those services as opposed to.
And Airbnb's regulations in the state of Vermont, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I will add very quickly, there is a lack of knowledge. About Airbnb, the regulations, the options that we as property managers have. As far as vetting the people coming in, there's a lot of information that. Anyone who is not familiar with Airbnb could greatly benefit from educating themselves on. Before submitting such an extreme ordinance.
Okay, and your name?
Stephanie Cornell.
Thank you, Stephanie. Marty, did you get your? Question answered. Anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Anyone on the Zoom?
There's one.
Yeah, that's Nancy Morino? Or is I? Let's see her on my screen. Amy? Go ahead.
Hi there. My name is Amy Bagyar and I'm actually a resident of Burlington. And we just spent three years getting our short-term rental and notice that I said short-term rental. Not Airbnb, but short-term rental because it's super important for us to make sure that we're using the language. That, uh, short-term rental includes Airbnb, VBRO. Flipkey as well as people who do not use that platform. So I just want to say. Just, it's, it's kind of like saying Kleenex. Even though it really should be tissue. So, um, what I will say. Is I am an Airbnb, uh, specifically I'm going to say that because that is the only platform that I use. I'm a short-term rental, uh, here in Burlington. I actually have a BNB permit as well as a short-term permit. Um, so they're two different things, but we worked really hard over the last three years to create a regulation that was a win-win. For both the city as well as for hosts, because for a lot of us. Um, we do depend, the reason we can stay in our houses in Burlington is because we do use this income to put back to our taxes. Um, and as a single female, um, it helps me stay in my home. But the reason I bring this up is because I do invite you to take a look at what, uh, Burlington has done. Because we've, we worked for three hard years to get something. That both supports the housing, lack of housing in Burlington. So every time. Um, that we host, a percentage of our, uh, fee. Small percentage, percentage of our fee goes to a housing trust here in Burlington. So it's actually, um, not only does Airbnb, and the reason I, I want to just clarify Airbnb specifically. They will take taxes out of our listing and send that directly to the city and the state. And I can't speak to Flipkey and, uh, VBRO. If they do that as well, but I know Airbnb does. They want to work with municipalities. Um, and so they're probably the only one that actually really does want to work with, with you all. Um, so I'm just saying that more to say. Airbnb actually is probably more of a friend than it's a foe for you. Um, and it's something to think about just because Airbnb does something a certain way, doesn't mean the other platforms do it. But I highly recommend taking a moment to check out what we did in Burlington. And I'm more than happy to be, uh, someone that you can talk through some ideas that happened where. Um, again, we created a win-win for both the host and the city. To be able to do this that didn't affect the housing stock as much as everybody thought. We don't have party houses. There's a lot of things that we do to make sure that, um. We are providing a service, but not a detriment. And I actually live in a very high density. Part of Burlington called the Five Sisters, where literally our houses are on top of each other. And my neighbors couldn't be happier with how the short-term rental has gone over the last six years. Because I've worked very closely with my neighbors on that. So I just wanted to say I'm listening in because I think it's interesting to see what's happening in. Smaller towns and smaller cities and more intimate villages like your, like yourself. Um, but I'm more than happy to also be, um, a voice in terms of lessons learned, what, what worked, what didn't. Um, and steps that Burlington headed towards that. Not just us, but the city councils, council members also realized, oops, that's the wrong direction. Um, it's either too regulated or not regulated enough because to be a hundred percent honest with you as hosts. Having some form of regulation, I think is important. Um, overstepping that regulation and complete restriction. Um, or having us jump through really small hoops that are, um. You know, on fire and next to impossible to get through actually can create an issue. So thank you for letting me share.
Well, thank you, Amy. Um, it sounds like you haven't read our, our draft ordinance yet.
So I, I did take a look at what the draft is. What, what I'll say is that, um, we also had draft ordinances at, uh. In, in going through our planning and zoning, uh, joint commission meeting and those changed fifty-five times. And so I'm, I'm not being flippant in any way, but what I'm just saying is I did read it and more than likely. Um, you know, yours may change as well as some new ideas kind of come up that I've heard. You know, people asking questions about things like appraisals and things like that, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Amy? We'll, we'll start here, Dana.
Uh, Amy, can you spell your last name, please?
Absolutely. The last name is Magyar. M-A-G-Y-A-R. I'm also happy to put in chat if it's helpful, uh, an email address if you need it.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Yep.
No problem.
Also Dana?
I am.
All right, questions for?
So part of what a lot of people are not familiar with, with regards to specifically Airbnb in the state of Vermont is that there is an optional one percent. Tax on, above and beyond the nine percent that we already pay. That one percent. I would dare say that most property owners of Airbnbs in Rutland Town would be willing to pay that optional. One percent to go towards. A potential water issue or shortage, to go towards things that really makes sense. That is more, much more feasible. It is an optional tax. It's there. And I don't want to speak for all the property owners, but I would guess that they would all be willing to pay that to help to contribute to. A much more feasible regulation than what you're proposing.
And you'd be willing to work three years on getting something?
Absolutely, because it would make a lot more sense.
Okay, okay. And, and how many of the short-term rentals in Rutland Town go through Air, Airbnb? As opposed to other platforms?
I can only speak of the ones that I. Manage. I manage three in Rutland Town and every single one of them are exclusively through Airbnb. Pay their nine percent. Have their own wells, have their own septic, have inspection process, have property managers that the homeowners pay for. And who have private cleaning companies that come in and manage all of that. So you're helping a lot of local businesses.
Right.
In that regard.
Right.
Right.
And, and I'll open up that question. I mean, what is the breakdown with the platforms in Rutland Town? Is it all Airbnb?
Most strictly Airbnb. I don't use any other platform. Airbnb has, that is the most, for hosts and property managers, I, that is the most attractive. There's, you have the most security, you have the most protection, you have the. Largest amount of, uh, ability to really screen who you have coming in.
Is there anyone here who, who is, doesn't use Airbnb, who was using another? Organization?
I, I think we found some instances, um, in, in our research of, of other platforms being used.
We're listed on another platform, but it's a secondary option for us. It's on the VRBO. Basically, they have their software's kind of worse than the protection first. We'll use it as like a backup, but typically if you get used to less safe base.
Airbnb offers the best insurance. They, they just, they really are. Very well equipped.
And, and for addressing some of the current concerns that we've, uh. Brought up with this ordinance, does the other platform, I mean, it sounds like Airbnb. You can check just about all the boxes there. Uh, what, what about the other platform that you use? As far as tax collection and.
Most of those big platforms.
But you prefer Airbnb? Are there? If we get to this point, we, you know, we, we need to work with the select board on this. If, but if we get to the point where we, we want to get a group working. On ordinance, are there's any volunteers here in this room? Would be willing to, to help? Help us, uh, reword this or rework it or, or come up with something else?
I, I, the only thing that I will agree with that is necessary in my opinion is occupancy. And I'm coming from a wide variety of types of properties. I'm coming from homes that. Uh, fire code should only sleep sixteen. That occupancy is crucial. That, that's as a property manager, as the representative of the property owner. That's important. So they, you know, you might get a little bit more money in the restaurant because you've allowed twenty people for sixteen. But at the end of the day, it's not okay for a lot of reasons. I am a fan of occupancy being part of in ordinance. I think that's just safety overall. You know, the, some of the other things i- in this instance, I don't think are applicable. I've been doing this for nearly ten years and I don't think it's applicable when it comes to water and sewer. That is up to the property owner to accept that burden.
Yeah.
And, and to manage that burden.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So say we start from scratch. Um, are there volunteers that would like, anyone out there?
Yeah. I, I am sure fully, I think I have a lot to offer. However, going in, I'm opposed to almost everything that is in this ordinance.
Why would you continue? I mean, would you discuss? At the result of the meeting to just drop it? I mean, why look for a problem?
Go ahead, Dana.
The Planning Commission serves at the pleasure of the Select Board. Um, if you were to go back and check our minutes last time, we had a large discuss, long discussion about whether we were supporting the ordinance or not. This Planning Commission did not take any position one way or the other with regard to the ordinance. Our cha, our task from the Select Board was to research ordinances. And to come up with a recommendation. It was also to collect, uh, input from the community. Uh, all kinds of input, no matter how it comes out, positive, negative or other neutral. Uh, about this. And then to go back to the Select Board at some future point to, uh, present our findings. So we, at this point in time, are only doing what Barbara has said at the outset. Gathering input from the community. And we appreciate the fact that so many of you have come out this evening to help inform us. So that I think. Is really where we're at. So, uh, the, uh, understanding or the. The presumption that we have, uh, decided to do this. On our own and that we absolutely need it right now is a false presumption. So we are in an exploratory phase. Gathering information about the pros and the cons. And, uh, I think that one of the things that we'll do is reach out to, uh, Burlington and Amy. To find out what they have done and how they got to where they were. Because if there are seventeen or more seventeen that have adopted. Our understanding is that there are more than seventeen that are exploring this, just like we are. And so we want to do right by, uh, potential guests. We want to do right by our potential hosts. We want to certainly help, uh, facilitate the economic drivers in our community. And we are, we share, uh, as many of the same, uh, values that I think you have expressed, uh, this evening. In terms of trust, in terms of willingness to, uh, work with people to be able to, uh, help provide economic drivers for the, um, for the area. So, uh, in that we all agree. I think that what I would like to simply say is that let's find our points of common interest. And work together on those. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
There are possibilities the Planning Commission might give a recommendation that at this point in time, no ordinance is required and that this might, you know.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yeah.
So that is a possibility. This is just not gonna go in.
It's, yeah, it, it's something we will discuss. That's right. Yes.
I do have a question. So thank you for explaining that. So once you guys meet and then you. At some point or the next meeting, I don't know how the flow goes.
It, um, yeah, essentially it goes that way. It, um, yeah, essentially it goes that way. We, we got some comments from the town attorney just this afternoon that we want to put back into the draft, put into the draft ordinance, change a few things. Then no one, other than Bill and I, no one on the, on the board has seen that on the commission. So we'd like to review that as, as a group and then decide after, you know, we'll, we'll let all your comments sift down and, and and make a decision on what we will recommend to the select board.
Bob, if I may, oops, go ahead.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, the other thing is that we, I don't know that we'll be making a, a recommendation for the, to the select board before the next meeting or in the next two months. I mean, we were asked to do a fact finding mission. And as we gather those facts, if there are more questions that arise, we will certainly be looking to ask additional questions and gather more information. So, I mean, just like if you go back and check our meeting minutes from last, last time, we had multiple different discussions about what recommendation we were going to make and we didn't. And that is because we need to have more information before we as a body can make a collective recommendation to the select board as they've charged us to do.
Got a couple of questions. Bridgette, I think had her hand up first.
Hi, Bridgette again. I was just gonna say, I, I wouldn't volunteer to be on a ordinance committee. I don't think she'll be in the ordinance, but I'm more than happy to work on the town and I think I was the first. I think we were the first Airbnb. We actually run the whole system of having to manually go forward. Option tax and I, you know, I think there are other ways probably to achieve the goal that potentially the select board is aiming for that doesn't involve ordinance. So if you want to reach out, I'm more than happy.
Thank you, thank you.
So my question in regards to, you said you have had the attorneys look at it. At what expense are we at right now, roughly speaking, that's coming out of the taxpayer money to try to achieve? Yeah, the attorney fees and you hired a company, it sounds like, to do the research? Oh, yeah. I didn't know what I thought. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Met with them to get a proposal from that, but nobody's hired.
Okay, I didn't know how you did the research to.
In our town attorney, we routinely go to him, especially when we have something as, as legal as an ordinance to go to. So he's, he's someone that works on all kinds of matters, legal matters for the town. Ear after ear for us.
Chair, may I inquire as to how you were able to locate the company that you received the quote from or the proposal?
So the first company I went to was the company that Killington uses. And after meeting with them, that company and I pretty much agreed that they're a great organization, but they are far larger than what we would need to manage. It was very, very expensive and they recommended this other company, the other company who, it's called Granicus. They, they're, they're more of an à la carte company and could give us the individual service where this, where the muni revs company, it's GOOS was more of a comprehensive and would, was somewhere around twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So, and that was just not, that was never gonna be, that was not gonna happen. So that was, we, we, we came to that discussion pretty quickly that wasn't gonna be a right solution for it, you know, but they actually recommended this other company. I've met with them a couple of times and and they're, they're very much à la carte, so they would just do the part of the, part that we would, we would be looking for.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Amy?
Thank you so much. One of the things that I'm gonna suggest that Burlington, we wish we had done from the start was actually to have people register. There's no ordinance, there's no, you know, you have to jump through these hoops, but one of the things that happened was that we didn't have the correct data of how many short-term rentals were actually happening. Now, for some of you, you may say, go on to Airbnb and you can type in Rutland and, you know, two thousand will show up. But what I'll say is, there may not be actually two thousand listings because my home, I rent my entire home. But then there are also some evenings where I rent just the bedroom and I'm in the home. That's actually two listings. So one of the things lesson learned for us that, again, we wish we had known was to actually ask people to register in some way. Um, there's no, you know, there was no shame on you, you should have registered sooner, or shame on you, you should have told us sooner. It was, the discussion was, why don't you see how many you're actually dealing with? Because that could dictate how big of a problem this actually is. Because the numbers on the platforms aren't actually realistic, because again, I could have two to three listings on the same piece of property, depending on if I'm renting the whole house, two bedrooms, or one bedroom. So that's just something that we wish we had done from the start. And that could be something that if your suggestion for the first year is to actually collect data and have people register, and maybe there is a small amount that they could do, uh, you know, put in as a fee, and then that'll give you what you need to really see what's happening in your area. The other thing I just wanted to say is unfortunately, I can't, there's no chat function, so I can't give you my email address. But what I can do is at the end of the meeting, I'll hang in there. And if somebody wants to take my email address, I'm more than happy to offer that. But thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Do you have a current population? But amount of people?
It's closer to four thousand and forty-one hundred now, right?
Thousand eight hundred changed, but we went to get our representation.
For the forty-eight hundred people.
Forty-eight thirty-four, I think.
Alright, thank you. And then just another question, um, the water usage the woman talked about there, I didn't mention. How many water districts do they have?
I think we figured out there's six and, and then there's at least one community. Uh, that has a community water sewer system, at least one.
They're all located in, usually I think they're all located in, in Center Rowland. No, no, they're all.
Yeah, and the community group is, is on the eastern side of town too.
One, uh, one, uh, Lisa.
Yeah.
Those are already fairly heavily regulated, the state primary. So they do have regular testing requirements, authorities, they have a system. I think that is something. I, I wouldn't think the water districts within the Airbnb short-term rental topic, because it's really, yeah, that is separate.
It's already regulated.
Got a hand up.
Yeah, thanks.
If I can, if I can just say, because we've got a community well, we've got forty houses on this and forty houses are depending on that water that's there. So we're protecting it in any way, shape, and form that we can. Yes, the state, we're regulated by the state. We have to jump through hoops for there, but if we don't have, if something happens to our water, we're done. You know, what, what do we do? We, we would probably have to look on to trying to drill another well, hooking onto the city. Those are not cheap options. So we want to protect. We're just, I'm just concerned and looking out for the integrity of our, the safety of our water. Because once we lose it, we don't get it back.
Yeah, that makes sense. And, and each water district should have its own bylaw. We can, we can be free to regulate something within that. Pass those and then into a bylaw or something, but I don't know. Not in the water district.
There, there, when, when we've been talking about ordinance, there was no intent to put in regulations regarding fire districts or sewer, sewer, you know, sewer system. So that wasn't, because that's beyond, like, like you point out, that's beyond the scope of what we can do. There was another topic of some, some of these may be in neighborhoods that have land use covenants or deed restrictions that we also don't enforce those. So that's outside of our scope. So you know, that question like, well, if we have these, can you put in there? They can't do that. It's like, no, it's, it's beyond, beyond our scope. So we were, we were looking at what was within the scope of, of what made sense for, for us globally.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. Uh, one of the things that we emphasized in our conversation was predictability, reliability, and consistency. So to, to Bill's point, uh, if you're looking at something, one of the positive reasons for doing something like this would be to have it be predictable, reliable, and transparent for e- everybody, so that it's not being done on an individual basis. That was one of the things that was championed as a reason to do that, so that anybody in town, no matter where they were, their, their status, they could come to the town and ask for guidance and it could be provided. If we don't have something like that, and I'm not arguing that we need it, but then we lose that uh, option of being able to provide guidance that's predictable, uh, reliable and transparent to all the residents and potential entrepreneurs and those who need additional income. So it, it, there is a service component that we are uh, trying to explore as well as we go through this. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you so much for all your comments and all your directions for us. And we've heard you and we'll take what we heard tonight and, and discuss it. And you'll be hearing more about it, I'm sure. Um, any other public comment?
Well, the rest of this is an open meeting.
It's all been an open meeting.
Oh, right, but, but when you said clear.
Yeah, yes, we, we closed the short-term rental part.
Right. So you're closed with that. If we may amend the agenda to open to old business.
We already approved the agenda before we did our short-term rental.
So you're going on, alright, go ahead, just continue and I will request when I need to request, where my name.
Okay, okay. So no other public comment this evening, um, no new business. Um, and moving down to old business, we've got discussion about the meeting tonight on the short-term rentals. I'm not sure how much discussion we want to have since we haven't incorporated, we haven't even really looked at Kevin Brown's comments. Bill's taken a look at them. And.
Where's, where's the select board stand at this point? Were they, are they asking us for any kind of deadline bill or just saying, continue to kind of research it?
The only thing they've, I've already got him his email. Um, the only thing they've asked is just what we've been doing so far.
Yeah.
So thi- this was, this was a, this is about what I expected for tonight.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was really good and I hope we have some other ones and I mean, I think it was nice to hear everybody's opinion.
Right, right. Yeah, so we should have Kevin's comments put in, you know, we'll redo the draft. We'll have another draft with Kevin's comments for the next meeting on June first.
Does Kevin have a document of the, the comments that he made that are succinct?
He sent a long email.
Yeah.
Can you forward that to us, Bill?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, we just got it this afternoon.
No, I understand.
Like, didn't bother to send it out there.
No, right. It was too much.
Actually some things that he brought up that I had already was listening to. So, yeah, it, it, a lot of, a lot of makes sense. So I think this can be part of the, certainly a part of the next draft. Created a really rough draft based upon his comments, but yeah.
Yeah, there were a lot of comments.
And I, I, I think it was important, Dana, to the, some of the comments you made that, you know, even Esther was saying to me after she, she had no idea, kind of, that I, I don't think she understood that it was planning commission, we were just looking for information. I think people were under the impression that it was something that was getting moved forward in a bigger, in a bigger way than it is. And it's, and, and it's still, and to be quite honest with you, I, I kind of thought there was maybe a deadline, but not a deadline, but a a target date by the select board. So I think it isn't, I mean, obviously by tonight, it's important that we take some.
Right, yeah, yeah. They didn't give us a deadline. Bill, Bill has always, from day one, said he hoped to get this, you know.
So it's Bill's fault.
For the next ski season, November first, right?
Mate, if we're gonna do something, that it's important to have that before.
We had, we had a date.
Or requests, right.
Yeah, there, there were a few things in there, like the, the effective dates. And the fees, those were just arbitrary numbers that, that we put in there to start with. Those were nothing that's some, some towns have it July first. That, that's, that's just a.
Yeah, so are we okay, uh, for, you know, to wait until June first to talk about what we heard tonight? Or are there some overarching themes that we want to bring up? And we got three members on Zoom as well. Any other comments other than what Jerry just said?
Seems, uh, it seems logical.
There's, there's a hint there.
Yeah, just a minute. Yeah, I see it, Chairman.
I was just gonna say that I, I think it seems logical to get that information from Kevin Brown. Look at it with, with the lens of the information that was presented this evening.
I don't think it, it affects much other than like, well, let's look at it. He, he took the waivers out and, and things like that, but I, I don't think it would affect the sentiment that we heard that, you know, this was unnecessary regulation.
Right.
It would still be quite a bit in there.
Right.
You know?
It'd be, it would be nice. Norm is still in your seat. Um, there was a couple of things. He, he gave us some of the statutory references he, he fixed. He's, a couple of words he took out. There's a couple of sections. One of them, the definition of short-term rental. He said, we can clear, we can clean that up because, and, and someone said, that sounds awful like Killington's. It is app, it is Killington's, like it, it copy and paste. So like I said before, I make no qualms. I, I, I look this all over the place. So uh, so he said that there were sections that we can clear up and that, that actually will make it shorter and cleaner. Absolutely no problem. Um, a whole, the whole section on compliance of applicable laws, he says that's a given, you have to. So that whole section just goes away. Right, it just goes away. He said, one of the regulatory requirements, he's like, we have it as number six that you have to comply by. He's like, that should be number one. So it's like just changing the order. That's waivers and variances. He says it, it can open up too much inconsistency in a process. He's like, just get rid of it. So that's all the section that's gone. Uh, and he said the waiver fees, that's again subjective. He's like, so just don't have any waiver fees. So that
Don't have waivers.
Right, no waiver, no fees, that, that half of that section's gone. He did say we should put in a section uh, discussing revocation or denials of future permits. So I added some language about that. A, a, a process to revoke or deny a permit in the future. So I added some language and, and basically copied our dog ordinance, which has a great language about hearings and stuff. It was, it, it just replayed, it was a great, a, a great reference. But we, and it's something we've already got. So that was some of it. He, he had more and some of it got in, some of it got a little, little long in the, in the description, but that was, that was most of it. There wasn't anything that was like drastically. I, I mean, I, I was hoping for it a little sooner. We, we got it like, what, three o'clock this afternoon? I mean, it was
Yeah, yeah.
Really recent. So, so there was, there was not gonna put anything in that, but you know, it, it was certainly constructive. You know, a, a lot of good comments. I mean, I, I think, you know, I, you know, I know, I know that this is, this is something we've worked on for, or I've been working on for a little while, but you know, I don't know how much we want to talk about it tonight or not, but.
It depends. I, I know Norm has something to say.
It's okay.
You're okay?
I was just gonna say, I don't know whether Howard, with respect to some of the audience's comments, could you guys, could Howard and Andy hear that? I had a problem, of course, I always do, but I wondered if you guys could hear the comments that weren't made by people sitting at the microphone. One gentleman. I'm sorry?
You probably couldn't very well. Like, that's why we're, that's why I'd encourage them to come up to the, to the table and then that just didn't, that didn't continue well enough. So I tried.
One gentleman had a voice that carried very well, who wasn't sitting at the table. One gentleman had a voice that carried very well, who wasn't sitting at the table. Um, but I, I had some trouble really. Yeah. Here.
You're, you're right, Norm.
I'm sorry?
It, it was difficult to, to pick up on some of that, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Well, I think, I think you did a great job.
Yeah, it was.
It's difficult to, I mean, to turn the, to reel that in sometimes people just had something to say and they wanted to say it. I mean.
And, and, and there were some elderly people, it was hard to get up and move around. Yeah, it was tough. Uh, Andy, any comments?
Yeah, it was, yeah, it was very difficult to, uh, to hear them. That was fine when they were by the mic where, where Bill is sitting now. But when they were just out in the audience, it was very difficult. And I guess I'd just like to say, when, you know, and really what we heard is, is negative comments and, and the fact that the, uh, ordinance is unnecessary. So I think we should just move along at another meeting and continue just do our work and submit it to the, uh, submit it to the select board.
Oh, not take any action? Not take any, not give a recommendation?
No, I really don't see any reason to take a recommendation now. Um, it's, it's really the select board's call all the way. Certainly, I, I personally am in favor of it, but I, I, I don't know where the rest of us go. We could put it to a vote and I would think that we'd be better hold, to hold it at the next meeting though, however.
Yeah, yeah. Honestly, I, I wasn't surprised that most of the people that were here tonight were against it. That, that really, I, I was, that's what I was kind of expecting is that people felt strongly. And absolutely, I don't think this will be the last one we, we hold. I think we definitely should have another one. We get down, down the road. And if this, if we keep putting this off and like Amy suggested, maybe we do a registry, but then it becomes without an ordinance behind it, how do we get people to do it? So.
Right, right. Um, what about the idea of having a small group, including some of the Airbnb?
The only problem with that, it seems to me, is that it's going to be all negative. I mean, not negative, it's going to be sided towards, you know, uh, it just seemed like that, well, I guess that was just because those are the people that were here tonight.
Yeah, but the people who, but the people who volunteered really don't, I mean, they were, they were, it was obvious that they were not in favor of the ordinance and they would do with one or two, one or two pieces of it.
Did anybody really get a reason why?
Well, well, my, my.
The dollars, it, it seemed to be.
The fees. So I, I understand that, like.
It, it seemed to be too high.
Nobody likes, so.
For what they make.
And I, like I said, that was arbitrary. So we can, we can talk about that.
There was, there was something else that there were comments about, uh, the ordinance impacting water usage and sewer and the ordinance does not.
It doesn't, it's specifically excluded.
Right. But I don't think they, I don't think they understood that. I think people saw those things in there and assumed that the ordinance.
Absolutely. And I think, I think Jerry pointed out, like, the occupancy is really the state permit that governs that. Like that's, there's a state permits for septic and bedrooms. Yeah.
And that was kind of the realization that I can't, cause I'm a wastewater designer. So it's like, you know, I know, it's like the bedrooms, you know.
It all, it all matters.
Right. Yeah. And it's just the bedroom is based with the state permit, but then like, yeah, so that does matter. But it's not really our, the state is, it's their responsibility.
It's independent of this, yeah.
It was really interesting because some of these, some of these, I, 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 the first ones I found, there were 18 on Airbnb that I found. Those, those are the first ones. And I recognized with the names tonight and I have, they're part of the list that I have originally. One gentleman was here, owns three of them and they're on the same street, like they're all 123. Uh, the gentleman that was here, uh, Dan, I think is what, Dan, he said his occupancy was 10, his occupancy is 14. So with five bedrooms. So, you know, but he says, you know, well, this, so again, we, we, I was taking some definitions and guidelines from other ordinances from the state regulations. So, you know, we, we can, we can talk about some of that. And sometimes it had five bedrooms before, but, but if it's changed since then, like if the Lister card says three, but there's been a change in the septic permit for the house and now it's permitted for five and the Lister card wasn't changed. And that's just a, a data correction. That's, that's, that's no big deal. But, you know, I, I, like, we heard water and sewer impacts, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to address those things. And, and I don't think we'd want to get into that.
Yeah, and appraisals is beyond.
And, and Chairman had a great point. I, I was making notes. Chairman's a great point. Whether we have the ordinance or not, those impacts are gonna be, could be, could be realized separate, separate of this ordinance. So.
Uh, so outside of this meeting, have you gotten feedback?
Absolutely.
From other people, like the general public?
Positive and negative. I've had other towns. So the, I've had other towns call me and say, hey, we're looking into this. We're interested in yours and ask questions. Some, I, I'm not sure if some of them are here tonight or not, but, uh, they, they were, they were asking about it. Um, most of them have been, most of them have been positive. Like I've had a couple of people say like, why are you doing this and, and talk to people about it? Um, but yes, there actually has been. And the, the number of, the 17 number comes from the Vermont Short-Term Rental Alliance website. They have a list. I submitted our town to that list in March and it's still not there. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how accurate that is or when it was updated, but that, that number of 17 comes from a short-term rental alliance website. That's the only real, that's really the only one in, in around that, that does that. I also heard.
Profit?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm not sure what kind of organization they are, but I think it just seems like it's a group of people that own short-term rentals that can kind of get together. Almost like a collective of, of, of property owners, but also did hear that it sounds like the legislature is going to be looking into statewide regulations next year. So, you know, but what we're going by is mainly what's in, in, in already in a lot of towns and, and stuff. But, you know, Amy's good point, I mean, Burlington's, Burlington's is fairly restrictive. There's, is a, there's probably one of the most, most restrictive in, in the state. Opposed to other towns that say like, we are, we are explicitly not doing anything. So.
And then she almost appeared like a ringer, but.
I don't know where she came from.
Again, if you don't know her.
But I've seen, I've been getting calls from all over the state about this. So, I mean, I, I don't know how many of you ended up saw Barbara and I on the news the other morning because we were interviewed by Channel 3 News about this. And I, I, we were getting, we're, we're getting a ton of attention. I don't really know why. But I mean, it's nice, but I don't, I don't know why.
And, and it, it's interesting. I, I, I still can't reconcile the considering it a major impact by people, I mean, financially. Financially, it's just, it's very small, it seems for the owners.
Sure. I thought, I thought it was interesting. Sorry, Bill. I thought it was interesting that, that the one woman brought up that 1% option for Airbnb.
Yeah, that's not an option.
If you think about 1%, whether it's an option or whether it isn't, but if you think about that 1% and what our fees are for what these people collect over the year. And it's probably, maybe it's 5%, but it's not way, so I, I don't understand people being so against registering. If the fees are too high, we could all talk about it.
Sure, absolutely. But so my, my whole thing from the very beginning with the fees was I knew we were gonna, you know, seeing other towns that we would, we would need someone to help research. That was, that was the thing. And there's companies that have those resources. The one coming to news is phenomenal, way too expensive. So that company actually said, here, you need to go talk to these guys. And I got a proposal from them. They're wonderful. Uh, right size is actually representatives are actually in Vermont from this company. They're nice. They're a worldwide company, but there's actually people in Vermont from, from them. So, uh, that was really nice. There, it's, it's basically what it works out to be is a hundred dollars per property per year is what, is what the contract essentially is. So when they found the 30, it's $3,000. It's, and we knew, it, it comes up for renewal annually. At the end of the year, if we have 20, it drops. If we have 50, it goes up. But our fees would, I, I would want to structure the fees, assuming we collect 100% of them, would, would cover that contract.
Yeah.
And, and certainly we don't need to make money on it. And I think there was a misconception. I'm not, and I'm not sure how it got there, but it kind of grew a little bit. That's why I wanted to address that. Like, we are absolutely not hiring someone. And we talked about a con, a vendor, but not a person. So, yeah, that was, that was, that was important distinction.
Then the analogy to zoning, I mean, th- this, this has nothing to do with zoning. We're not, we're not saying you, you can, you can't have these in certain parts of town. We're not saying you can't have these at all.
Yeah. Um, zoning one of those.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Well, I think probably there's some others out there, maybe.
You.
It's helpful for the, you know, the people that were here at least.
Yeah.
I think understand it better. So I think it was good to just have those conversations.
Yeah. Uh, Norm, is your hand up?
Yes, please. Um.
Okay, sorry.
I'm curious, um, how Amy got involved. Did we seek her out or?
Oh, no, actually, uh, I, I'm, I'm not.
She, she was not, she was not a ringer.
Excellent question.
W C X.
Probably did, yeah. I mean, really, I mean, that, that was, that was kind of surprising that we got, yeah, there was a, there was an article, uh, Tuesday morning. Tuesday morning on Channel 3. Um, they, they, we had an interview with them, Barbara and I did. And they talked about globally, but specifically we're calling out us, but, but like, like business, like there's like 20 something towns that are in this. So I, it just seemed funny that we were just kind of became the spotlight, but it's fine. But, but a lot of the towns that I, that have called me said they've read it and they're like, that's, they really like it. And they're like, if this goes through, we're probably just gonna steal it. I'm like, go ahead. It's, it's already, it's already stolen. So go ahead. Yeah, right? We can, we can, we can get rid of the fees for users because we'll make it up, we'll make up the copyrights. Um, you know, I, I.
Go, go ahead, Bill, finish. I'll comment. I was just gonna comment on the zoning, uh, cloud, so to speak. Um, I think the best way to answer that in the future, if, and I wasn't here for the whole meeting, is to say, look, this is no tighter regulation than our subdivision regulations. And we had subdivision regulations because there was a need for them. There was potential for difficulty with town services, uh, impact on neighborhoods. And so that was the genesis of the subdivision regulations. I'd stay away from zoning. It's a hot button issue. It has been as long as I lived in town and even, you know, since then. And, um, but I think we can draw parallels to what we have and kind of perhaps diffuse it a little bit.
Uh, you know, for, for listening, listeners, I'm, I'm wondering if, if we eliminated fees, what the opposition would be at that point? Because there's really not much else in this that would be really opposed to. So, um, they did talk about inspections. Um, uh, one of the, one of the Division of Fire Safety inspectors, uh, who, actually I know on another level, uh, came in on Tuesday and wanted, wanted to talk about this before the meeting. And he said, from their perspective, because we haven't hear anything with occupancy of six or more, we would, we want inspected annually. He's like, from our perspective, we would like all of them inspected once. And unless there is a complaint or a new property owner to change hands, he's like, once they're inspected, we're happy. And I, I'm, I'm happy with that. That's, that's fine. So yes, there'd be an inspection, but you know, again, if the opposition, opposition is to an inspection, then you gotta ask why.
Right.
So, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're out opposed to having an inspection done, there may be a reason why. So.
And I'm not sure why there is, there's questions about having a registry.
I don't know either.
And I, I don't know if anyone actually said that tonight, but you know, maybe it is just the fees.
I don't know. But if, if we, if we have, i- if they're, I, I, I don't, I, he didn't give me the list. Like he didn't give me the list of the 30 because that's kind of their, their deal is that they have the 30. But if that's the case, then, uh, the way I, the way I had kind of just laid out the, the fees was the 18 that I found had 55 bedrooms listed. So that would be about $7,300. So the contract is for $3,000. Now, are there other related expenses? Yes. So I don't, we, we, I wouldn't want to say cut them in half and, and, you know, but we certainly could say like, okay, so maybe there's, it's $50 for the permit and then a hundred dollars for the first two bedrooms. And then that's it, you know, so we could talk about, you know, I, I don't, I don't want to try and lower, lower our, what we're trying to do to meet, to make people happy because we're never gonna do that. But, you know, there's always going to be somebody, there are always going to be someone opposed. But I think if we get to the, the bottom of it, like I, I, I heard, I was really trying to listen to the objections and, you know, it was, it was more about what it would cost everybody. So it seemed like the fee was probably the genesis of a lot of it. Because there's really not a lot of actual regulation other than making sure it's a safe property. That's really the, it's a safe property and someone's available if, if need be.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't think there was a full understanding of, of the fees. Because the, there was one guy had an example. He used a.
15 days.
Yeah, that was really.
Restrictive.
It, it was, and it didn't sound like, it, it didn't sound like.
The arithmetic wasn't right.
The math was right.
$1,100. Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
Or he used, or maybe he misunderstood.
Misunderstood, I'm sure.
That, that could have been, yeah, yeah. So I was, I'm gonna change this a little bit. I think if we do this again, uh, it would be good for us to start saying, here are the things, here's what's covered in this ordinance and go through them, let's just go through it. Nothing else is included in this and, and, and start from there. Because, I mean, there, there was talk about, the fact that they talked about water usage and, and our, the, the ordinance's impact on sewer and water usage was, it, it was no impact.
But it's, and it's outside our scope.
Yes.
And it is. And, and that's why I brought that up. Like it's, it's outside our scope. And, yeah.
That was, that was an audience member that raised that question.
Yep. And she represents the fire district. And, and that, that absolutely is a concern for them, but most of those have uh, covenants in the neighborhood about property use. But again, I told him, I said, listen, I said, that's nothing. We, we as a town are going to investigate, regulate, enforce, you know, that's, that's up to that neighborhood to do that. You know, and maybe that's part of the objection to the registry is now, now they'd be identified as, as a, as a property. I don't, I don't know. I mean, you know, so, you know, a, a lot of the concern in the ordinance and they said, well, they kind of focused on the, the, the neighborhood impact, like, well, we don't have people that do that. That's great. And, and happy for it. And Ed said, you know, they didn't have any specific instances, which is fantastic. You know, but the other side of that is, well, if we have a problem now tomorrow, if we abandon this and go back to square one, if we have a problem tomorrow, we're 10, 12 months from a place where we can get back to helping that problem. And, you know, Ed said that they have, they have control, which is, which is fantastic. But we also talk about things like parking, you know. So having enough spaces that there's no on-street parking, because we do have an ordinance that doesn't allow for on-street parking. So that's, that's important that we make sure that is understood because that protects the character of the neighborhood too.
And, and the safety issue.
Yeah.
Can be.
Uh, what, what I heard, uh, was the most vociferous uh, objection was to fees funding a position.
Yes.
That seemed to dissipate as soon as you clarify.
And, and that, that's why I'm like, that's why I felt it was important to be like, I just want to make sure everybody understands, like, we're not bringing staff in to do this. So.
And so the, the sense that I got was that most of the objections were around, uh, the fee structure. Although nobody really came out and said that.
Right.
But they were talking about personnel and how they're going to staff it and how they're gonna pay for it.
Understood.
So I think that that was a preconceived notion that, that people had coming in.
So I think we'll probably end up with a revised frequently asked questions document out of this. That's safe to say.
I did think it was a good document, though. It wasn't.
Yeah, it was.
Very good.
Yeah. Well, that was, I think Barbara put that together after the last meeting after the Facebook post. So that was, that, that worked out pretty well. Yeah, I think.
Maybe it raised more questions than.
It's okay. It's okay.
Well, certainly, there was, there were very few things asked that were directly related, related to what you covered in there.
Right.
So I think it did help. I think it helped a lot.
Well, Barbara did a good job too of going back to saying what the purpose was because people were straying around that. And they, they had a bunch of ideas or emotional, um.
And we expected, we expected that tonight. So, yeah, absolutely. I'm glad, I'm glad that people came to tell us.
Yeah.
And not just fester about it and then, you know, get upset. So come, come, come talk to us, but that, that's, so I, I think we've got a lot of good information. And, you know, I, I, I think it's still worthwhile moving forward. What, and, and, and is it gonna look like this if, if, and when it's adopted? Probably not.
And I think that people were in a much better place at the end of the meeting than they were, we were halfway through.
Yep, I agree.
I think so too.
Great.
And I think we're in a pretty good place just to let this rest till next time.
I think so, yeah. Marinate.
Marinate, that's the word. Everybody okay in Zoom land? Okay, we'll move down to the subdivision ordinance. Um, again, thank you Dana for putting together the list of changes. I think everyone's got a copy of that.
You sent it out last time and.
Just before the last meeting.
This meeting, yeah.
So people had one.
Anyone need a copy of it?
I couldn't say anything.
I think I have a copy. Bill, you did send that out locally, didn't you?
I think so. It's, it's, that's a pretty big one. Um, it has not gone to Kevin yet. I think so. It's, it's, that's a pretty big one. Um, it has not gone to Kevin yet. So.
That's right. So maybe we shouldn't do much more with this.
Yeah, that one's quite a big one.
All, all I'm gonna say is that, uh. It, it can go to Kevin, but whether we discuss this and review this, which was what the task was that Bill and I got. Two meetings ago, that we should at least be aware, that everybody should be aware of the, the one pager or one and a half page. Document. And if there are questions that need clarification, those should probably go to Kevin.
Yep.
Rather than sending him this and then sending him additional.
So I, I, I did want to wait, try not to get him too far. We have other tasks he's working on too, but. I wanted to wait to get the comments and bits back. And that, that, that one's gonna be. A big one.
So this, this was just for internal purposes.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and also to get us thinking, okay, what did we do? You know, what was the scope of our, and how would we summarize our change?
Right.
Our changes. So we can still noodle that, um, in our minds, um, as Kevin does his thing. Reviewing the mammoth subdivision.
Because I don't think, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think this has everything that we commented on in your document. That was annotated for, for, um, Kevin. So this doesn't need to go to Kevin.
Right.
This is a summary of what you have.
Yeah.
In the subdivision ordinance that has been commented on for Kevin.
Yes.
So that was the task that we were given. And you and I reviewed that and you told me, go with this.
I think, I think we're good, yeah. So I think we're at a good spot with it.
Okay, while we wait for Kevin, are we in a good spot that this is, how comprehensive is this? I'm a little confused now.
Ninety-five percent comprehensive. It does, I mean.
You, you're talking about, that's the list of what we changed, right? Is that the, okay, yeah. That, that is, that is. Probably as comprehensive as we're gonna come up with.
Okay, so, so, yeah. So what I'm thinking of projecting ahead to when we are ready to. You know, send this out and have it approved, we need a summary and we need to list the changes.
Yes.
When we do a public notice.
Yep.
You know.
So that, that will be that, that will be the guy.
Okay, okay. So we still need to kind of like an overall summary, just to kind of a, a nut graph, just what, what we did.
We'll, we'll probably use that as, and as a, as a, as a guide, just go through it. But I, so I, I have three. Versions of the ordinance right now. I have our original. I have a copy that has all of the changes. Highlighted, flagged, crossed off, everything you can see. And then I have a copy that has everything with the changes implemented, like. All the changes to sections and languages and numbering. So we have.
That's the clean copy.
That's the clean copy.
You also have the fourth one, that's the annotated one for Kevin.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
How was that annotated again?
Uh, we're just made, made comments in the columns and, and things, so.
Uh, for example, on here, just to give you a little orientation, when we talk about, um. The, uh, references, statutory references. Bill has flagged everything that is a statutory reference and a comment for Kevin to check.
Right.
If, if I found that there was no such reference, Bill noted that and is asking Kevin, how do we address it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because if that is a statutory reference that no longer exists or never existed, then we need to know what reference we put in there or if we just take it out. Period.
Right, right. And that's what we're paying him to do.
And that's what we're paying him. So, uh, not every single word change.
Right.
Is captured here.
Right. I mean, some things like select me the select board.
Or a typo of of from, uh, of four or something like.
We wouldn't need to put that stuff in, in public notice.
But all of the substantive changes, like sections removed, things like that, that's all there.
That's all.
All there.
And maybe there might be some mention that the, you know, that the, the, the narrative was, was, you know, corrected in places.
Updated language to, yeah, absolutely.
One line to cover all of that. Okay, okay. To be continued.
Anybody wants copies of those or like needs a version, let me know if you want to see it. And I'll, I'll be happy to send it to you if you don't have it or stop in. I'll print it out for you.
But for next time, since Bill and I were the ones given the task of going through this. Uh, what I would appreciate in terms of feedback, in terms of our process, is for people to look over this page and a half. And have any questions for Bill or for me next time about what these mean if you don't understand it. Because then we can clarify that and, um, include that in whatever we send to Kevin.
Can you send them out again? Thank you. I hope I can print them this time. I couldn't open anything.
If, if you need, just let me know and I'll just stop in. It doesn't take long.
Bill, do you want me to, do you want me to send this one electronically since it?
There's some things, there's some things I can't open that they said.
I think it's probably a lot about me.
Probably what you have opened and blocking your Google, you have something blocking Google that won't.
Would be.
Update your word.
Yeah.
So, okay.
May I ask you just one question? So does that mean the, the attorney has a copy with all these changes in it?
Has no copies yet.
Well, he, he will receive.
So the, the intent, once we're, once we're, we're satisfied, was to send him the original. The fully noted, modified, colorful document that we've seen a few times. The list of all the changes and then the final version as, just as a reference. So. I was gonna send him the different copies, just so if there's a question about what went, where, what came from, where, they were all there. So like, we have. Your, the act of fifty part we added, you know, the permitting, we, that's brand new language. So that's not gonna be in the original. It's gonna be in the modified and the final draft. So. Kind of seeing that where those came from, so.
And, and he'll receive that after, we'll, we'll send it to him after we review it?
Yes. Well, if we're ready to send it, I can send it.
Send it.
Okay. I, I didn't want to till we got the short term rental ordinance back because.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think now, now is the time. We can, it'll be another three weeks or.
So Bill, are you gonna send him, are you gonna send this along?
I was, yes.
That's fine.
I don't expect this one back in three weeks.
No.
Okay, that is the latest on the subdivision ordinance. Um, Energy Committee, um. We're, the committee's basically looking at doing, having some tables and demonstrations and such at the townwide celebration. I think we need a, another committee meeting. Do you mind asking Mary if that's okay and we'll schedule one? Um, because the select board doesn't meet for another two weeks almost, right?
Nothing, nothing for next meeting. Don't, let's, let's avoid that.
Yeah, could you ask her between meetings whether we could?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, every time.
Whether convenient energy committee. Okay. Okay, any announcements from you folks?
All right. I think I really came under other public comments.
Um, okay.
Around. And I hung around because of the then, questions on the vendor ordinance. Uh, I think that became effective November first. Is that now in place?
Oh, yeah, it has been.
And so, uh, the, the question, two questions was if. The, what do they call the ice cream truck that goes around? The humor truck is prohibited from. Down with this noise and so forth, with this bell that.
I have attempted to reach them to get them to get a permit. I have been unsuccessful in doing so.
So that was the question. The other question was, do group yard sales? A neighborhood yard sale need a vendor permit? And if so, is.
They're, they're not. It, no.
Okay. Our reading of the, of the ordinance.
Yeah, you might want to, Bill's the best one to answer those questions. And you want to compile them for him.
If I hadn't been here tonight, I wouldn't have hung around. I would have, but I was here.
Sorry.
Since, since the, the subject came up, Bill, I, I have another, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Uh, a, uh, an individual yard sale. Uh, that's held almost every weekend.
Yep.
Uh, does that require?
No.
Okay. Does it, does it, is there some point where it requires anything?
So, so where we've kind of handled that is if somebody's doing a garage sale, yard sale on their property. They're not, they're not a vendor. They're not going, they're not a food truck. They're not, we've had a, we've had like a, somebody organized like, almost like a. A vendor show over here. But if it's, you're doing a garage sale every week, that's your private property. We're not, we're not gonna do that. If you started baking cookies and going door to door. Then you, then you qualify.
Okay, sure, no. Kevin, you can only have three yard sales a year without paying and collecting. Sales tax.
But that's a state regulation.
That's state regulation.
That's, that's something we would, uh.
That's not.
We don't, we don't get involved with that.
Thank you.
We didn't do it. Nine.
Thank you.
See you, Chris.
Thanks for what you do on the planet. Of course, I don't think you hear too many.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's wrap this up with the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from April twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
And I'll second. Thank you, Kevin.
Norm, we're on to the minutes.
I haven't had a chance to look at them. I was away all day.
Okay, they're, they're perfect.
I assume, I, I yield to your proofreading skills.
I have a checkmark and nothing else written on there, Norman. So, uh, guess that's good, right?
I wasn't talking about your skills. I was talking about Barbara's, but thank you.
I, I was a surrogate for you there, Norman.
Okay, well.
Okay.
That's gonna cost me.
Indeed.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
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 Opposed.
I'll abstain. It was.
Good to see you both.
Here we are.
You have more on the side.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn? Thank you for, yeah, couldn't. During the meeting tonight, we do need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned.